Welcome, everyone. Good evening. Tonight's public hearing on the FY 2019 approved budget will begin. On behalf of school board members, I would like to thank you for taking the time this evening to come and talk with us about the budget. Please turn off or silence your cellphones at this time. Tonight, we have sixteen registered speakers, three of whom are students who will be the first to speak. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and to be respectful of everyone, we ask that you do stay within that time limit. The clerk will start the timer when you begin to speak, and you'll be able to see the time remaining on the lectern. The buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. Three names will be announced at a time. When you hear your name, please move up closer to the front of the auditorium so you'll be ready when it's your turn to speak. If you plan to yield your time to someone else and did not call in advance, please come to the podium when your name is called and say who you plan to yield your time to. If speakers are not here when their name's called, those names will be called again at a later time. There will also be an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no-show speaker slots remaining at the end of the hearing. After all the registered speakers have addressed the board, I will announce whether there are any no-show speaker slots. We ask that those who wish to take those spots form a line at the podium, and we will take the speakers one at a time until the spots are gone. When it's your turn, we ask that you state your full name into the microphone. After you've spoken, please see one of the clerks so they may collect your information for the record. Throughout the evening, you may notice board members leave the table at times, but we do have audio in the back area. It's broadcasting, so they can see and hear you back there. All right. With that, I will call the first three names, and that's William Kenefik, Kelly Cho, and Tanvi Haldenkar. William Kenefik, if you would come and begin speaking, thank you so much.
Do I just start? Hi. So me and my group members over here, we're going to be presenting you the issue of chronic absenteeism in schools and how, what we can do to improve and reduce chronic absenteeism. So anyways, currently, FCP has policies. Generically, you start out when there's a truant student or someone who is at risk for chronic absenteeism. You'll start in school, steps to reduce that through meetings with counselors and parents. But if it's deemed that the student is still at risk and the behavior hasn't slowed or stopped, they will continue on, and there's like a petition for truancy, I believe it's called, in which case, if the petition is granted, an attendance officer will come in and talk to the student. And so, one problem with this is studies have shown that this doesn't actually reduce chronic absenteeism. In fact, afterwards, it sometimes, some studies have said that it's even more prevalent, which this could be a sort of a correlation thing because the students are like, the students at that point are already kind of on that path. But at any rate, it's not, it doesn't help the, it doesn't help the students any, so we try to find methods to reduce that, and my partner will talk about what we can do to reduce that. Anyways, also, one positive thing is, at least at a personal level, student-by-student basis, the introduction of the SIS system with the attendance records, that has, allows parents to see the student's attendance record and see how much they've missed over what period, what they've known about, what they haven't known about, which at a personal level, that's great. But across the county, the school keeps track of general, or the county keeps track of general attendance records and the general percentage that are absent, but they don't track students to see what students are chronically absent, and that, they don't report on that percentage, which that's, I feel like that's an important thing to, we need a number on that so we can see how much of a problem it is. They just give us a generic attendance record. I guess that's, so my partners will talk about what we can do to specifically fix that problem.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
We appreciate you being here tonight. Kelly Cho?
Hi. I'm Kelly Cho, and I go to Thomas Jefferson High School, and I'm also with my two group members. And today, I wanted to explore the existing strategies for addressing chronic absenteeism in other school districts around the United States. So, schools around the U.S. have been developing regulations and strategies to combat chronic absenteeism, to help students who may be falling behind due to mental illness, just illness itself, bullying, housing or food difficulties. And I focused on the efforts of Los Angeles Unified School District, or LAUSD, which is the second-largest school district in the nation. And there, around thirteen thousand five hundred students are absent each week. And right now, outreach to middle and high school students has gained a lot of awareness with, like Liam mentioned, SIS, and using like tracking devices for students so that parents can get involved. But for younger students like kindergarteners, this has not yet been addressed fully. And chronic absenteeism in younger students is linked to poor academic performance and a higher probability of dropping out of high school. And therefore, catching chronic absenteeism early is crucial for any student to develop a regular habit of coming to school regularly. And so, there's not just one reason why students are chronically absent, so there's just not one solution for getting them to come back to school. That's why LAUSD has a program that has multiple strategies that holistically combats chronic absenteeism. And their first strategy is to improve staff perception and awareness of their community, and this is the first step to avoiding misunderstandings that could arise between the teachers, the students, and administration that helps them understand the student's situation and how the community is affecting their situation. And the second is, obviously, to increase parent involvement because younger students, and like even middle and high school students have problems approaching their issues and actually asking for help, and so parent involvement would really help the students get the help that they need. And also, LAUSD improves collaboration between the school and the parent. And while administration is important for facilitating communication, chronic absenteeism is best dealt with the people the students interact with the most, which is, one, their peers, and, two, their teachers. And so, if their teachers, student, and guardian communicate together to create a plan to encourage and make easier student reintegration into their studies. And lastly, LAUSD attempts to find root causes for student absences, and while it's not technically the school board's responsibility to address problems in the community, issues such as community violence can very negatively affect students in the school environment and lead to mental illnesses like PTSD, depression, anxiety, and yeah, so those are some of the solutions.
Thank you very much. Tanvi Haldenkar?
Hi. My name is Tanvi, and I'm a senior at TJ. Along with my teammates Kelly and Liam, I'm also currently conducting research related to chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is typically defined as missing ten percent or more of a school year, which is around eighteen school days a year. This is only two days a month. In my research, I focused on what FCPs could do to gain more information about absenteeism rates in our community, and what programs it could implement to decrease it. As a part of the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, schools are required to choose another indicator of student success. Many reports have shown that chronic absenteeism is one of the best to fulfill this. FCPs is currently one of the only school districts in the region that currently does not measure rates of chronic absenteeism. For the past couple of years, Loudoun County has been measuring the rates and has been taking steps to fix the problem. I believe that a review should be conducted about what strategies principals are currently taking to decrease chronic absenteeism. Involving parents and educating, educating them as to how important being in school is for students is one of the easiest and best ways to improve attendance. For example, sessions could be conducted back-to-school nights informing parents about chronic absenteeism and the problems that follow. With absenteeism statistics, FCPs should also benchmark both the rates of current, both the rates and current strategies against those used in other school districts, both in our area and around the country, which are of similar size. This would effectively show how much of a problem it is for a school district when compared to other similarly sized school districts. Finally, FCPs could pilot programs to fight chronic absenteeism through Project Momentum. The easiest way to increase student involvement is by having students come to class more. Teachers just can't help students if they are not in class. Although current, although current Project Momentum programs are very helpful, if students are there, targeting the root cause behind why they're not performing well, such as not coming to class, could really help improve student achievement. I hope that through this presentation, I've been able to convince you that chronic absenteeism is a problem in our community that is worth looking into. Through first implementing a study of current absenteeism rates, FCPs can see which schools would benefit from programs to decrease them. A review could also be done regarding what strategies are used by principals currently. And finally, through Project Momentum, pilot programs could be run, possibly involving parents or other family members as well. With all of these, students who are at risk of not graduating or passing courses can be caught early in help before they're, before they are at risk of not graduating. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're always particularly happy to hear from our students, so thank you for coming out tonight. The next speaker is Carlo Cucci, to be followed by Kevin Hickerson, to be followed by David Kuchenbecker.
Aloha. My name's Carlo Cucci, Vice President of Fairfax Education Association and Music Educator at Mosby Woods Elementary. Over the past two decades, we have witnessed policies and budgets that have impacted our ability to provide the best for students. For the first time in many years, this budget reflects that we value public schools. We are grateful to Superintendent Braybrand, who presented a budget that focuses on employee compensation with no cuts to our programs. Yet, education professionals are shackled to college debt. We purchase our own school furniture, decorations, and supplies, and we work additional jobs to provide for our families. Employees like me who are on the BA scale appreciate having the opportunity to share our input on ways to attract and maintain professionals who will remain dedicated to FCPs. We believe our time is now to adjust pay scales so that all employees are making a living wage. We stand in solidarity with our union brothers and sisters who are fighting for healthcare, pensions, and school resources. When you cut pensions, it's a signal that our hard work is not valued. As a member of SAFE Coalition, I urge this school board to restore ERFC for our newest employees. Class sizes continue to increase with the workloads placed upon our staff members. I find it hard to believe that thirty kindergarten students in a class is a best practice. Yet, this is what we're doing to cut costs at the expense of our children and their learning. Specialists take the biggest hit when homeroom classes are divided out to other classes to avoid staffing needed for our overcrowded buildings. Our time is now to implement equitable staffing formulas and master schedules in our elementary schools that match our middle and high school colleagues. Safety and security is also a major concern, and the sheer number of trailers in FCPs is unacceptable. How are we working with the county to utilize vacant buildings? When will we unite to implement universal childcare and preschool to bridge the learning gap for our neediest families? Let's return to the visionary and innovative school system that we believe in. And we have one of the biggest school bus fleets in the U.S. with vehicles that should have been replaced years ago. We need to invest in mounting video cameras on the outside of every school bus to ticket community members who place our children's lives at risk every day. I imagine the funds generated would pay for the equipment to deter citizens from ignoring school bus laws. And reductions to our custodial staff make it difficult to maintain clean learning environments without the proper equipment and supplies. The school system needs to address the inequitable distribution of equipment and supplies that are needed in all of our facilities, not just the ones in our wealthier neighborhoods. While it's great that we're trying to save money by being energy efficient, I urge you to consider the working conditions of our custodial maintenance crews are forced to endure year-round, which are simply inhumane. This budget does reflect what we value, and it's a first step in building a stronger Fairfax for all, and the Fairfax Education Association looks forward in working together to improve our schools that we love.
Thank you. Ms. Hickerson?
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Braybrand and FCPs staff. I am Kevin Hickerson, President of the Fairfax Education Association, and I'm speaking on behalf of our membership on the FCPs 2018-19 budget. We'd like to congratulate you all in your efforts to get our first fully funded transfer in recent memory. We know that it's only the first step to ensuring our salaries are competitive and fair to all FCPs employees. We look forward to collaborating with you next year to continue that progress. We would ask you to listen to your employees who are precariously stuck in the BA scale above Step 19, and those who are just below it and about to reach that plateau. The FEA and FCFT are working together to bring you our plan that comes directly from our members. We should have this ready just after the school year ends, and we look forward to speaking with each of you about it soon. We also cannot forget about the IAs who were frozen last year above the current salary scale, nor can we forget about the close to one hundred IAs who are having their contract reduced from one hundred ninety-three to one hundred ninety days. The savings of sixty thousand dollars is small in relation to the overall budget, and yet the impact upon those employees' families are immense. Please reconsider cutting their contracts. While focusing on salary, we are forgetting the biggest indicator in keeping great educators in the school system. We need to get serious about addressing the concerns around workload and a fair system of evaluation and mentorship. Last year, a follow-on motion was made to develop a plan around workload issues that our employees are facing across the county. The school board made a promise with this follow-on motion to our hard-working staff that they would be included in the process for addressing workload. Let's make sure it happens. The FEA would like to have a sit-down meeting within the next few weeks to discuss how we will develop this plan of action with all employee organizations. Next, a fair system of evaluation and mentorship is necessary to keep developing teachers from burning out and leaving the profession or being forced out of the profession. The FEA can point to multiple examples of new teachers being shuffled out of the county and not allowed to work for another school within the district. All new educators need support, and most of the issues surrounding new hires can be remediated through appropriate mentoring and coaching. I can tell you this: We need to end the practice of throwing away developing teachers when we begin each school year with a staffing shortage and a teacher crisis across the country. There are over one hundred ninety other administrators who could, who should coach and support them during this critical period of growth and development. Coaching great teachers requires an effective teacher evaluation system. One example of a neighboring county that effectively implements such a program is Montgomery County, Maryland. Montgomery uses a peer assistance review program that was developed by teachers, is implemented by teachers, and has a very high success rate. The goal of peer assistance review is to fairly evaluate employees who will also provide coaching and development opportunities so that teachers are constantly improving their skill set and practice. It's professional, it's fair, it's cost-effective, and it's been proven to work. The only question is, why aren't we doing it in Fairfax? An investment in the people who educate our children is a direct investment in the community and a long-term sustainability of Fairfax County. Any improvements in salaries don't mean a thing without a stable workforce. The turnover of staff and burnout of remaining staff creates instability and low morale. Our educators' working conditions are our students' learning conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have David Kuchenbecker to be followed by Kathleen Christensen, to be followed by Kimberly Adams. Mr. Kuchenbecker? Is Mr. Kuchenbecker here? We will come back to him. Kathleen Christensen?
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Christensen, and I am not only a product of the superior school system, but also a twenty-year employee. I have always held the utmost esteem for Fairfax County Public Schools and all its employees, instructional and support, who work as a team to ensure educational success for our students. Teamwork is important regardless of position designation. I am a support employee. I am also part of the ten percent of your workforce who are at the top of the pay scale. There has not been a cost of living increase nor market adjustment for our group in five years. As our health insurance premiums have risen every year, our compensation is actually decreasing each year we stay, but we don't leave. We are loyal employees. We are following hire to retire long before it became the new initiative. Why is it then that when all other employees receive steps, those at the top of the scales do not receive anything equivalent? The Department of Human Resources announced new pay scales were developed that will help support employees, even to a small extent, those of us at top of scale. Prior to a recent Fairfax County Board of Supervisors meeting, non-instructional staff were encouraged to show up in solidarity to impress upon the board the importance of support employees and to encourage them to fully fund the school budget. The perception was, if that budget was not fully funded, the new pay scales were the first to be cut. A large number of us attended the meeting. Now that FCPs has received those funds, I sincerely hope you show that same valuation of support employees who proudly serve to ensure the school system runs at its best. We too are an integral part of a student's successful education. I not only urge you to approve the new support pay scales, but to also ensure that the funds that are designated for this endeavor are not reallocated to another program after your approval of the budget. All Fairfax County Public Schools deserve equitable treatment and compensation. I thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I also thank you for your work as part of the entire dedicated team it takes to produce top-quality students in an exceptional school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Adams to be followed by Tina Williams, to be followed by Elaine Saunders.
My name is Kimberly Adams, and I have been engaged in this annual budget process since 2001, when teachers worked to the rule and stood in solidarity across our district to bring about a cost of living adjustment that valued our time and talents. That action secured our raise. Eight years later, following one of the worst economic declines in our history, we stood up again to find our way through the pay freezes. And now, here we are, a decade later, and we still cannot say that our school employees are all being paid adequately. Your most poorly paid support employees are in need of a serious salary adjustment. Teacher and classified scales need to have transparency once again. Pay scales need to be predictable and understandable, and this is a call for compensation standards so we can hold our employer accountable to its employees. There are too many of us who have seen Fairfax unfairly balance its scales time and time again. Too many of us have been devalued, and people are leaving this system. We are all watching what is happening in our nation's schools, especially this week in North Carolina. Education professionals just like us are saying enough is enough. They're doing what they must to ensure that everyone sees the decreased investment in infrastructure, the lack of pay for educators, eliminated funding for arts and libraries, and so many more injustices for their children. They could not remain silent any longer. Not every area in their state is poorly managed, but there are enough areas of disparity in their entire state is walking out, speaking up, and standing up together. You should be aware that Virginia's educators are standing with our neighbors to the south, gathering evidence across our own state. There are many areas of disparity and lack of support for our students, and Virginia is just not doing enough to ensure that every child gets the education they need. We are not a top performer in our nation when we add up all the disparities across the Commonwealth. And when the time comes, Fairfax must stand with the most neglected Virginians to ensure that every child is taken care of, no matter where they live. Even here in Fairfax County, with our fully funded budget request, we are still falling short. Significant capital improvement investments are needed, and those repairs should have started yesterday. Every child should have access to a proper bathroom facility, state-of-the-art technology, and every employee from bus drivers to custodians, principals, and teachers need to be adequately compensated. In northern Virginia, no child should be denied access to food because a waiver form was not filled out correctly. Our entire Commonwealth needs more counselors, healthcare caseworkers, student support systems, and we certainly need more time to teach and less testing. I know from past experience that our work should be collaborative, an effort between all stakeholders. There is much to be done, and we know that Fairfax can lead the way, as we always have in the past. Our educators will put students first, sustaining our system, and we expect that this board and administration, who want to see all students succeed, will stand with us to drive the changes needed, not just for our system, not just for the Commonwealth, but for our entire nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Williams to be followed by Elaine Saunders, to be followed by John DeLong.
Good evening, school board. I'm Tina Williams, a school counselor and president of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Congratulations to Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, our school board, Dr. Braybrand, and the leadership team on your work together to fully fund the FY 19 school budget. This collaborative process was a win for our county. This is an important step towards fully funding a livable wage to all education professionals who are on the front line for our children. It demonstrates that an excellent public education is a priority for every child in the county. The Federation of Teachers looks forward to collaborating with FCPs on a fair and respectful resolution on BA-level teachers, retention, concerns with current employees, eliminating bullying, retaliation, and other forms of unprofessional behavior directed towards education professionals in the work environment, providing high-quality benefits such as long-term disability that actually benefits the employee when they are in need of it. In terms of attracting, recruiting, and retaining, as well as improving work conditions for teachers, talk with your teachers. Include us consistently in conversations in developing fair, clear, and inclusive policies and regulations that impact educators and the students they teach five days a week. We know firsthand what works, what matters, and what simply is not best practice. As a school counselor, I'm trained in restorative justice. I've seen how it works to foster positive relationships between children as well as adults. Benefits from participating are improved self-discipline, self-awareness, empathy, better decision-making, respect for others, and a sense of community. Restorative justice teaches life skills, builds resilience, forgiveness, and inspires hope in lives, which are 21st-century social and emotional skills that are also needed to be successful. Hope affords the opportunity to change for the better, to reach for that possibility of, and for a glimmer of light amidst absolute darkness. We can never give our young people enough resilience, forgiveness, hope, compassion, and support. Providing resources and training for teachers to recognize when the restorative justice process would benefit would reduce the need for hearing officers and punitive consequences that do not offer desired outcomes. The Federation of Teachers supports safety in our schools for all students and staff. That said, adjudicating children for non-safety issues into the criminal justice system is not best practice. We ask that this board narrow the SRO scope of responsibility, prohibit SROs from switching back and forth from administrator to police officer, end racial profiling, and stop and frisk policies, and empower parents to intervene on their children's behalf when under police investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Saunders?
Good evening. My name is Elaine Saunders, and I'm a long-term, longtime resident of Fairfax County, a parent of two FCPs graduates, and a teacher of third grade. I've been in the county for over twenty-two years. So, any questions, let me know. I'll tell you. Today, I would like to discuss how the funding of the school system will be allocated. There have been many years that the school system has not been fully funded, and as a result, there are many important needs. With the lack of funding in the past years, our staff and infrastructure has been stressed. I look forward to your thoughtful allocation of funds to help relieve some of these stresses. Different approaches have been taken to stretch funds when the requested amount has not been funded to the school system. The impact of not fully funding the school system in years past has had a major impact on FCPs. Maintenance and updates to building structures and other capital resources often have gotten pushed back. Then, this causes issues because of dealing with older structures and equipment. Other approaches to stretch funds involve increasing class sizes. Students are not just numbers, but individuals with different- Students are not just numbers, but individuals with different and sometimes special needs. The time needed to assess and give feedback on tasks varies, but as mentioned in an earlier speech I gave at the beginning of the budget process, a simple task in third grade to assess might take about 46 minutes in my third-grade classroom. That's 23 students only. I feel lucky that I only have 23. However, some tasks take longer. A writing assignment might take almost six hours, and that means just one writing sample. As a classroom teacher, we are constantly reviewing and assessing work, and honestly, most of this work is done outside of contract hours. But this takes a toll on teachers, which affect not only the students, but the teachers' families. You can calculate the time cost as you increase the class sizes. The workload in the county with a normal class size on teachers today is so great that it at times creates a resentment because people feel they are not being compensated for all the time needed to do the job. There are attacks on our retirement system, which will impact future employees and possibly make it harder to recruit the brightest and the best for our county. Salaries for employees have been frozen over the years, and now the school system is trying to catch up. There are still threats to the BA-LAN of the salary scale. People who have committed their lives to FCPS should not have their pay potential taken away to help balance the budget. Still yet, there are support staff who are not even receiving a living wage, and as a result, many cannot live in the county. Past cuts in funding have resulted in lower pay for substitutes, and this has made it difficult to find and keep qualified substitutes. Teachers spend personal dollars to supplement supplies for the classroom and for the students, and then this has become the norm, and this should not be what is expected. While the school system has not been fully funded, many of the employees have continued to work hard to support our precious commodity, our students. Teachers and employees need to become more selfish and demand what is needed. We need to say enough is enough, and we can no longer shoulder the burden. We need the school board to carefully decide how to allocate the funds given them. We need to focus on what is best for our students, the future of our county, and that means looking carefully at how the funds are allocated for our public schools. Thank you.
John DeLonge to be followed by Norman Hall to be followed by Agnes Mallard.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening. FCPS and this board are not meeting their responsibility to establish appropriate controls over contracting, and the process, particularly with respect to sole-source, non-compete contracts, is corrupted, wasteful, and in need of reform. Two audits of FCPS contracting have been made recently, one in 2015 and one in 2018. Both identify serious deficiencies in policies and practices. It is clear from these audits that FCPS has not seriously addressed this issue. The 2018 contracts audit found, one, contracts were awarded without authority; two, nearly one-third of all contracts are not consistent with OPS, process, schedules, or checklists; three, OAG found no evidence of research to justify any single sole-source contract, and noted that there is no formal process to maintain documentation. OAG also found no evidence that contractor performance and related expenditures were examined prior to the exercise of renewals. Note that both a justification for sole-source contracts and independent research performed by OPS are requirements per internal procedural memorandum. We note that in response to the audit, the signatory authority for these non-compete contracts has been moved to senior levels, and this is positive and deserves kudos. However, there is a real problem that we urge you to forcefully address. Staff is allegedly incompetent, untrained to perform their duties and follow policy guidelines, and auditor recommendations have been ignored or circumvented or unaddressed for years. This clearly exposes FCPS to possible waste, fraud, and abuse. We request, one, that all contracts be immediately reviewed and brought into compliance with FCPS policies; two, that there be no non-compete contracts awarded or reviewed without a public posting and request for proposals at least one month before granting the contract; three, that no current or former employee or former board member be permitted to contract either individually or through a company with FCPS through a non-compete contract; four, that the county purchasing agent and the county auditor come in and conduct a review of OPS; and five, that a contracts database of all current contracts be maintained on board docs or other public website. It is discouraging to read the auditor's findings and to note the obvious disconnect between the avowed commitment of FCPS to transparent and accountable management and the contracts' management practices. It is even more disconcerting that this issue has been raised for many years and that there are members of this board who have been aware of this for many years, and yet these corruptions persist. I'll end by quoting from Michael Bloomberg's commencement address at Rice University last week, where he noted that "free societies depend on citizens who recognize that deceit in government isn't something to shrug your shoulders at." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Norman Hall to be followed by Agnes Mallard.
Good evening. I am Norm Hall, the advocacy chair of the Fairfax County Special Education PTA. Looking back at the past year, when it comes to the special education budget, my take is that the proposed budget is good news. One year ago, we were contending with a view that there needed to be a deep-dive look in the special education for budget savings. This was hard for our families, teachers, and staff to hear. We held our breath through the fall as we waited for any kind of news about the budget task force to be completed. In January, our new wait was over. No cuts. Let's discuss how the special education budget amount was then determined. The budget documents from January refer to staffing formulas and examples of how staffing is calculated and allocated to schools. Wonky numbers, people like me wondered, how have these formulas changed over the years? Have changes been reviewed with respect to growth in the Fairfax County school enrollment and distribution of students by type of disability, comorbidity, and need? While some staffing ratios are mandated by the state, are those state-mandated ratios reflective of a superior school system like FCPS? And how are we addressing the non-mandated staff needs, like behavior intervention staff and assistive technology staff? Do those statewide requirements reflect the needs of Virginia's largest school system? Budget documents state that budget task force that was to take a more analytical approach to selected programs, policies, initiatives, and other topics, but the FCS position is that such looks do not have to be placed in the public view. To complete this work, FCPS announced in January that a smaller budget task force representing residents of Fairfax will take a more in-depth review of the larger budget areas and provide the superintendent with recommendations to find efficiencies and improved programs. What was shared with the public was discussion of cost drivers such as transportation. That's one side of every evaluation, but to be fair, there needs to be descriptions on the benefit sides, too. I was disappointed not to see discussions on the ways that instruction is differentiated compared to standard practice when teaching and supporting students without identified disabilities. There is no such analysis of team teaching. What would be better? As I have described on multiple occasions and in multiple formats, there is a need for disaggregated analysis of the needs of students with disabilities. We would like to see steps taken to ensure that special education staffing and programs at the classroom level are adequate based on the distribution of student need data by school, number and nature of specialized staff, ancillary services, physical accommodations, medical needs, et cetera. And this is before getting into a closer look at unmet needs. The problem of unmet needs has been known for years, as it reflects problems with hiring, training, and retaining teachers and providing a number of well-qualified instructional assistants, therapists, et cetera. The Fairfax County SEPTA appreciates the good dedication and work we've had over the past year, and we're really looking forward to a great year coming ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Agnes Mallard to be followed by Theresia Rollins Anderson to be followed by David Broder.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Chairman Evans, Chairman Strauss, Dr. Braybrand. My name is Agnes Mallard, and this evening I'm speaking as an individual, but I'm also a very proud FVA member. I'm a longtime Vienna resident, a voter, taxpayer, and mother of three Madison High School graduates. I came to Fairfax a long time ago, and I'm now in my third decade here, in a second career of now 18 years as an FCPS support employee. Eight years as an instructional assistant, and now almost 10 years in IT support services. I am so appreciative, over the years that I've been a Fairfax resident and a constituent of the schools, of the united support that you gave as a board to our new superintendent's first budget. Your willingness to work with the County Board of Supervisors, and our great good fortune to have the advocacy of new county executive Brian Hill have all been efforts that have brought us to this positive position of a fully funded plan for the year ahead. The budget's emphasis on competitive salaries for teachers is long overdue, and as it supports our ability to recruit and retain dedicated teachers, I certainly welcome that. But I look also to the budget's stated commitment to aligning pay for support personnel with local markets. Chairman Strauss, you said that Board of Supervisors' support would enable you to fulfill promises to instructional staff and support personnel this year. I'm anxious to see how that plays out for us, for US-scale, IA-scale, and Schedule H employees. We're all waiting for the reveal after next week's board meeting. In my building, my friend Kathleen, and many other staff whose skill and experience keep your computers going, make it possible to present incredible professional development opportunities, the leadership conference, honor celebrations, and yes, these school board proceedings sit at longevity steps, the top of grades, and have seen no pay increase for quite some time. But at the other end of the spectrum are support employees for whom no entry-level step, and in most cases, no three or four to nine and 10 and 14 steps does not provide a living wage for even a single adult, according to the MIT living wage calculations. But how many FCPS staff do you know who are supporting only themselves? There is a continuing need for your advocacy. I applaud Dr. Braybrand's decision to rethink the chopping off at the top of the BA scale, and I hope that you will additionally look at that as it affects the IA scale in addition. We are your support employees. We strengthen the safety net for your at-risk children, and we deserve your support as well. I'm going to take just a second to say that I have the great, good fortune to precede my good friend Theresia Anderson, who is Virginia's VEA Educational Support Employee of the Year. And I think she deserves that great opportunity.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Agnes, for that. I am Theresia Anderson. I thank you, and good evening to the school board, Dr. Braybrand, and staff. I'm also the chair of the ESP Council, so I stand before you, of course, to stand and speak before you for support. Last year, the IA scale was reduced by $4,000 for those who have served for almost 18 years plus. This action shows that Fairfax County just may not value instructional support personnel. All employees, especially support employees, need to earn at least a living wage, which is calculated by MIT, which you've heard us speak before you back in January about. It will maintain, it'll help maintain and retain the high standard employees. Right now, walking in the door, IAs earn 37% below the living wage. Walking in the door, and they must work 15 years to earn at least $34,935. To make sure that Fairfax County is a healthy and productive work environment, we must support all staff. Please do not lessen the earning potential for any staff, especially after many years of service and experience working to provide students and become, to perform and to get students to be the portraits of graduates, to exhibit the qualities that we want for all students and staff. The results of our work draw many businesses and industries to northern Virginia. They will continue to pull our staff, and like other school systems do, because they value educators' intellect and expertise through compensation. We see that you are providing tuition reimbursement to those who are working for their masters. Please consider IAs. We would like some tuition reimbursement too. We don't like to just bring you a problem, we also bring the solution. In many other districts, they're expanding the value of us by providing that tuition reimbursement for portions of the tuition spent to become science, math, and special education teachers, just to name a few. There is money in Virginia Department of Education from the federal loans that will supplement this plan and fulfill the teacher shortage. Lastly, being a granddaughter of two school custodians and a third-generation educator, I know the value and the importance of hard work, and especially of using a tight budget. Please remember to provide us with silent witnesses, silent witnessing within evaluation times, and however Fairfax County could also continue to lose strong, bright, intelligent support staff and great teachers for Fairfax County schools. We all need to be paid to allow us to live in the community in which we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Broder to be followed by Ann Ramish.
Good evening. Nobody told me I was going to have to follow the ESP of the Year. It's a little daunting. My name is David Broder. I am here tonight as the president of SEIU Virginia 512, representing Fairfax general county employees, but here tonight to stand in solidarity with our FCFT and FEA educator sisters and brothers. I'm also here tonight as the proud parent of an FCPS student, and a future FCPS student, which is hard to believe. My daughter Lucy is finishing up her kindergarten year at Mosby Woods, and the growth she has displayed is remarkable. My wife and I moved to Fairfax County, like so many other families, because of the world-class schools, and libraries, parks, and rec centers, which means we moved here because of the world-class educators, and we're incredibly glad that we did. Every day, my daughter comes home excited about what she learned, which was very different than how I came home often, and she's always ready to tell me about Martin Luther King, or the planets, or the life cycle of a plant, or how she learned to draw a face and learned about musical scales, or how to be a good community helper. It's really fantastic to see. And I know that's because her educators, the ESPs that work with her, have fostered a love of learning that will stay with her her entire life. So, on behalf of her, on behalf of my family, and on behalf of our members, the general county employees, I want to make four very quick points. First, I want to thank you all for advocating for real raises for our educators. They deserve every single penny and more. When I asked my daughter what I should tell you all tonight as I was running out, she said, "Tell them that Mrs. Hopkins works really, really hard." But I think you already know that. Second, I want to ask you to partner with FEA and FCFT to ensure that the voices of frontline educators are heard and respected. Teachers need healthy, positive work environments, where they are treated as professionals and treated with respect. To that end, please take into account frontline employees when developing equitable salary scales, evaluation processes, and collaborative partnerships. Third, as we rightly reward our teachers, let's ensure that all education support professionals earn a living wage as well. And fourth, in order to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline and address the systemic racism that's in all institutions, not just our schools, I ask you to work with the educator unions and the NAACP to examine the SRO MOU to narrow the scope of responsibility, address racial profiling, and empower parents to intervene on their children's behalf. Thank you all so much for listening. Thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ann Ramish, and I'm here to ask for your help. This is my 12th year teaching ESOL to adults for FCPS, and I have taught in four different programs. The adult ESOL teachers have recently learned that some of our classes will be displaced in favor of the adult high school program. We would ask that suitable spaces be found for our classes so that we may continue to provide an important service to our community. Your funding of adult and community education has decreased dramatically from $1.4 million in fiscal year 13 to the current $235,000 level. We are looking for a commitment. We are looking for a commitment in funding and in kind support that reflects your belief in the importance of adult and community education. In our ESOL program, we provide instruction in English, life skills, and job readiness skills to our adult students. I have students from five continents this session, including some refugees. Some of our students are new arrivals, but others have lived here for 20 years but not yet learned English. Many have children in FCPS, and they want to help their children succeed. There are currently about 5,000 enrollments per year. There are normally 60 to 70 part-time teachers per term, teaching at eight sites. The GED teachers prefer for students to complete the ESOL classes and then move on to the GED. Our students want to pursue their own version of the American dream. The first step for all of them is learning to speak English well. If they do well, the county does well. Some of our students are working two jobs in addition to attending classes. Some work seven days a week, or the night shift, before morning classes. These adults are highly motivated. We have been informed that the Herndon Learning Lab and half of the classrooms and office space at the Plum Center will be lost. We need locations that have facilities appropriate for adults, including parking, internet, computers, projectors, and availability for morning and evening classes. Since our students live across the county, it is important that our classrooms similarly be properly distributed around the county. We ordinarily begin enrollment for fall classes as the spring term ends in June, and so time is of the essence. I would ask that you ensure that good new homes for our displaced classes are found as quickly as possible. We want newcomers to adjust and assimilate so all members of our community can live happy and productive lives. Please offer our students ready access to affordable, quality education. Don't leave them behind. Thank you for your time and assistance.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go back to see if speaker number six has arrived. David Kuchenbecker? Mr. Kuchenbecker in the audience? Well, with that, we do have one more slot if we have a speaker who did not sign up but would like to speak to us tonight. Anyone at all? All right. With that, I just want to thank everyone for attending this evening's public hearing and for sharing your comments and your concerns. The FY19 approved budget will be discussed at a work session scheduled for this Thursday, May 17. It's going to be here at Luther Jackson at 7:00 PM. The board is scheduled to take action on the FY 2019 budget on May 24. We welcome your comments and your questions, and you can contact us through the website at fcps.edu or click on School Board. Again, thank you very much for all of your comments and for coming out tonight. This meeting is adjourned.